Can I ask everybody to please stand so I can salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Brown. Counselor Judith Garcia, absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia is absent. Counselor Lopez. Counselor Robinson.
Yeah.
Counselor Recupero.
Yeah.
Counselor Vito.
Present.
Counselor De Jesus.
Present.
Counselor Hattlerburg.
Here.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Eight members present. You have a call.
Okay. First order of business, public speaking. Anybody here for public speaking? I'll ask one more time. Anybody here for public speaking? Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting. Next order of business.
Next, we have approval of the minutes for the city regular city council meeting dated November 6, 2023.
Motion to accept and file on the suspension if there are no objections.
Seeing no objections, so move.
Next, we have communications from the city manager. We have a copy of a communication received from city manager Ned Keefe regarding library donation. Dear counselors, I am writing to-
Counselor Hattlerburg.
Motion to accept and file the communication under suspension if there are no objections.
And there'll be something coming up on the new business, seeing no objections.
Next, we have a communication receipt from city manager Ned Keefe regarding reappointment to Board of Library Trustees. Dear counselors, pursuant to section four dash two of the charter of the city of Chelsea-
Chair recognizes Counselor Hattlerburg.
Motion to accept and file the communication and under suspension if there are no objections.
Let's go to a second reading. Gotta go to a second reading.
Next, we have a communication receipt from city manager Ned Keefe regarding fiscal year 2024 tax rates. Dear counselors, in follow-up to the November 11th, the November 13th presentation of taxes and valuations, I am writing to request the two votes required by the city council prior to the setting of the tax rate.
Calvin Brown moves to waive the rest of the reading, accept and file communication, move it to a public hearing.
Mr. President, it's actually for a public hearing, which is on the 4th of December. So the order states that it's just gonna accept and file and make note that we are having that public meeting on the 4th.
We'll begin the recommendation back from the planning board, their meeting on the 28th of this month. So we will have it for our December 4th meeting.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Ned Keefe regarding Mystic Valley Elder Services Grant. Dear counselors, I am writing to request formal city council acceptance of a $15,000 grant from Mystic Valley Elder-
Counselor Hattlerburg.
Motion to accept and file the communication under suspension if there are no-
Something will be coming up on the new business, seeing no objections.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Ned Keefe requesting approval for departments to pay prior year expenses. Dear counselors, I am writing to request approval for the Department of Public Works to make payments of prior year expenses from its FY '24 budget. From time to time, municipal agencies are unable to effectuate payments to a vendor in the year that the goods or services are provided. When such instances occur, the city council must approve the payments from the current year department budget for the prior year's obligations. Currently-
Counselor Hattlerburg.
Motion to accept and file the communication under suspension if there are no objections.
Seeing no objections, so move.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Ned Keefe requesting approval for a union contract with United Steelworkers Local 9427. Dear counselors, pursuant to section four dash three I of the city Chelsea Charter, I am writing to request city council approval for the cost items of the new collective bargaining agreement negotiated with the United Steelworkers, Local 9462.
Make a motion to move it to a second reading.
Accept and file communication, we something coming up on the new business. Counselor Recupero, this is one of the pieces of information you were talking about earlier. This was some of the business you were asking about earlier in regards to contracts.
We move on to communications and petitions to the council. We have a communication received from Wakefield resident Gabriela Padilla regarding immigration policy in the city of Chelsea. Dear Chelsea Council, I hope this email finds you well. I am writing to you as a concerned resident of Chelsea eager to hear your perspective on recent changes in immigration policy and the potential impact they may have on our community. I greatly value your insights and believe that your opinions can shed light on the complex issue of immigration reform and its consequences for our city. As you may be aware, there have been recent updates to the immigration system, including changes to the immigration cap and the assistance available to newcomers. These policy adjustments are expected to have significant implications for Chelsea and its residents. I believe that a thoughtful discussion about these changes is vital to understanding how our community may be affected. I would appreciate it if you could take a moment to share your thoughts and opinions on the following topics. The new immigration cap. What is your perspective on recent changes to the immigration cap? Do you believe these changes will benefit or adversely affect Chelsea and its residents? Are there specific aspects of the cap adjustment that concern you or that you may consider positive? The support and assistance for immigrants. How do you see the changes in support and assistance for immigrants affecting the integration of newcomers into your community? Are there any specific initiatives or programs that you believe would be beneficial in helping immigrants better adapt to Chelsea? Strategies for community integration. In your opinion, what steps can our community take to ensure that immigrants are well-integrated into Chelsea, both culturally and economically? Do you have any suggestions for fostering a more inclusive and welcoming environment for immigrants and their families? Your insights are invaluable, and I believe that open dialogue on this topic will help our community better understand the implications of these changes and potentially contribute to positive outcomes.
Yes. Can we waive the rest of the reading or accept and file the communication under suspension if there are no objections? And can I just briefly say a couple of comments?
Yeah.
I asked that we waive the rest of the reading because a lot of it is very repetitive, but what it's asking is for us to have a conversation about recent immigration policies that have been enacted. Unfortunately, I don't know, well, I agree that we should have this dialogue. I don't know if this is necessarily the platform for it. I would defer a lot of these conversations to some of our community-based organizations. And if we need to do something a little broader where we meet, have a town hall meeting or something, where we can have this conversation, then I would look to one of the counselors here, one of the nonprofits to initiate that. I just wanted to make sure that we're acknowledging we are a community of immigrants, and I wanted to acknowledge all of the very interesting perspective that the person submitted. And I do hope that there is dialogue. I just don't know if there's anything that we can do right now.
Okay, you want to accept and file a communication under suspension.
Yeah.
Seeing no objections, so move.
Yeah, but I hope that there'll be dialogue at some point around it.
Next order.
Next, we have a communication received from the Assistant Parking Clerk regarding the November 14th, 2023 meeting of the Traffic and Parking Commission.
Motion to adopt by roll call vote. Can I just say something briefly?
Yes.
Thank you. I just want to let my fellow colleagues know in the public, no, there've been several communications and orders that have come through us that we had referred over to a subcommittee on conference so we can talk about the Traffic Parking Commission. And though it's been months, that meeting is happening tomorrow evening at six o'clock with the city clerk staff, the parking staff, as well as members of the Traffic Parking Commission, and I hope that everybody makes it so we can have that conversation.
Yes, that meeting will take place here tomorrow night. The microphones will be on, but it won't be broadcast on cable. Next order.
Counselor Vito requested roll call vote on adoption. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia is absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia is absent. Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero.
Yes.
Counselor Vito.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Hattlerburg.
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent, and Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Eight in favor, none opposed, three absent. Order is adopted. We move on to second readings. We have a communication received from city manager Ned Keefe being read for the second time regarding Community Recreation Advisory Board Appointment. Dear counselors, pursuant to section four dash two of the charter of the city of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend for appointment to the Community Recreation Advisory Board, Ms. Farrah McCormick of Chelsea for the recently vacated term expiring February 13, 2025.
Chair recognizes Counselor Brown.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adopt on the roll call vote. We've had this from our last meeting.
Seeing no objection, the clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia is absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia is absent. Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero.
Yes.
Counselor Vito.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Hattlerburg.
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent, and Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Eight members in favor, none opposed, three absent. The appointment is approved.
Next order.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Ned Keefe being read for the second time regarding appointments to boards and commissions.
Mr. President, I ask that we waive the reading, and if the city, if the council clerk can name, say the names and the boards that they'll be being appointed to, and then we adopt by roll call vote.
Clerk, the clerk will do that, and then we'll have the roll call on the adoption.
The following boards and appointment commissions are included. Ms. Mayor Molina de Romero of Chelsea for a three-year term to the Community Preservation Committee. Ms. Juana Lourdes Perez Vasquez also to the Community Preservation Committee. And Ms. Kim Huffer of Chelsea to the Community Recreation Board.
Clerk will call a roll on the adoption.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia is absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia is absent. Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Vito.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Hattlerburg.
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent, and Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Eight members in favor, none opposed, three absent. The appointments are approved. Next, we have an order received, introduced by Counsel President Robinson, being read for the second time. Order that in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 64, Budget Management Procedures, whereby costs incurred in FY '21, '22, and '23 were not paid and are owed to vendors, and to meet this obligation-
Counselor Hattlerburg, ask for a roll call vote on the adoption, seeing no objections. Clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Brown.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Judith Garcia, absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia is absent. Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero.
Yes.
Counselor Vito.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Hattlerburg.
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent, and Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Eight in favor, none opposed, three absent. The order is adopted. We have an order introduced by Counsel President Robinson being read for the second time. Whereas the city owns open space located at 212 Congress Avenue-
Chair recognizes Counsel Hattlerburg.
Motion to adopt by roll call vote. I would simply ask that the clerk read what follows, now therefore be it ordered, just so it's clear what we're voting on.
Now therefore be it ordered by this vote, the Chelsea City Council endorses this project for the receipt of park grant funds, appropriates $850,000 representing the full project cost from the General Stabilization Fund, designates 212 Congress Avenue as open space parkland in perpetuity, in accordance with Article 97 of the Massachusetts Constitution and Mass. General Law, Chapter 45, Section 3, authorizes the city manager to utilize any surplus funds for current and future park-funded improvements for open space within the city of Chelsea, certifies the city manager's authority to enter into an agreement for the receipt of these funds, and directs the city manager to take any and all necessary action to accomplish this project.
Clerk will call a roll on the adoption, a yes vote to adopt.
Counselor Brown.
Yes, on the adoption.
Counselor Judith Garcia is absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia is absent. Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero.
Yes.
Counselor Vito.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Hattlerburg.
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent, and Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Eight in favor, none opposed, three absent. The order is adopted. Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel President Robinson being read for the second time. Whereas the city has for years recognized the dangers of-
Chair recognizes Counsel Hattlerburg.
I would ask the same thing on this, that we adopt by roll call vote after reading the therefore be it ordered section.
Now therefore be it ordered by this vote, the Chelsea City Council approves the intermunicipal agreement as drafted between the cities of Chelsea and Everett governing the Island and River Flood Resilience Project pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 4A, formally expresses support for diligently pursuing external funding, completing design and engineering, and executing the project, and directs the city manager to take any and all necessary action to accomplish the project.
Counselor Hattlerburg moves to roll call vote on the adoption.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia is absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia is absent. Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero.
Yes.
Counselor Vito.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Hattlerburg.
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent, and Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Eight members in favor, none opposed, three are absent. Order is adopted. We have an order introduced by Counsel President Robinson being read for the second time. Whereas the city through the Department of Housing and Community Development-
Chair recognizes Counsel Hattlerburg.
Same thing on this one, please, please adopt by roll call vote after reading the-
Now therefore be it ordered by this vote, the Chelsea City Council authorizes the transfer of $225,000 from the Volk Park Renovations Project to the 88 Clinton Street Park Project for the purpose of constructing a park on the recently acquired property, and authorizes the city manager to utilize the remaining surplus funds of $175,000 for open space projects within the city of Chelsea.
Clerk will call a roll on the adoption, a yes vote will be to adopt.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia, absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia is absent. Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero.
Yes.
Counselor Vito.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Hattlerburg.
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent, and Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Eight in favor, none opposed, three absent. Order is adopted. We move on to new business. We have an order introduced by Counsel President Robinson. Order that in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the Chelsea City Council hereby authorizes the city manager to accept a donation to the Chelsea Public Library in the amount of $50 from Lynn Ellis-
Counselor Hattlerburg moves for a roll call on the adoption, seeing no objection, a yes vote will be to adopt.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia is absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia is absent. Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero.
Yes.
Counselor Vito.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Hattlerburg.
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent, and Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Eight in favor, none opposed, three absent. Order is adopted. Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Recupero. Order that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board look into dedicating all affordable housing opportunities to Chelsea residents only.
Would I adopt under suspension, like to speak on it?
Seeing no objection, you have the floor, Counselor.
This, it seems like we always build affordable housing, affordable housing. State law says we can't do this, we can't do that, and what this, what I'm trying to do is try to give the Chelsea people that live here for them to stay in our city. It's very hard. They keep saying building affordable housing, but it's always little and little Chelsea people that live here. I want to make sure that more Chelsea people live in our city. If you build affordable housing, build it for the people that live here. And that's, my whole intent is to keep the people that are here. I don't want to displace them. I don't want to gentrify them even faster than they can. I just want to make sure that if we're gonna do something, let's make sure that we have the priority and the ability to give Chelsea people the opportunity to stay within our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hattlerburg.
I also wanted to just take a moment and speak on this to say that I also respect the idea of making sure we respect giving as much as we can to the people of Chelsea. I'm very sensitive to the federal fair housing laws, and my counselor beside me did take the time to make sure that our order did not explicitly violate those, which is not our intention. So I just wanted to pause and take a moment to say that, as, you know, I did agree with having this go through under suspension, I do not object to it. But I also want to make very clear that I want to make sure we don't violate fair housing law where it comes into play.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other speakers? Cal Brown.
Mr. President, I also agree with the two speakers, that we definitely have to be sensitive with this matter. But we also have to be very cautious in our procedure, and we have to realize that, again, a lot of folks from Chelsea, when we build these affordable housings, whether they're housings that you can buy to own or where you can buy to, where you can rent, we still have somewhat outpriced. So I'd like to see us as councilmembers sit down and come up and come through some kind of agreement, how we can work closely with the city on a process and also on a elimination process where the, in, in light of the applicants, the Chelsea residents get a higher priority. I know it's something we've been done, but we've, we just billing so much and we are proving so much affordable housing and transactions, and we just really need to make sure that our residents get their fair share. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors on the matter? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to read the next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Recupero. Order that the city manager direct the Department of Public Works Commissioner to remove the rubber mat obstructing the handicap ramp near the bus stop on Broadway at Everett Avenue across from the Bank of America ATM.
Chair recognizes Counsel Recupero.
I like to adopt under suspension, like to speak on it?
You have the floor, Counselor.
If you go down there, you see this rubber mat. I'm in favor of beautifying the city, doing whatever you have to do, but I'm not in favor of hurting people, especially disabled people. That's to go on a bus. If you block the way of that ramp to go to a bus, what is the purpose of it? And I'm not, I'm against doing something. I want it removed now because what you're doing is you're hurting people on wheelchairs. They cannot go to a bus, and that's wrong. Whoever makes the decision should have ever thought not to do that. So they had no compassion. They made a decision saying, okay, we're not gonna think about the poor people. If I parked my car in front of a handicap ramp, I would get a big fine. But the city, which is the one that enforces this, doesn't think like that. It says, we're gonna do it because we are the city. Yes, you are the city. You set the laws, but you set it for the benefit of the people that live here. And you're not above the law yourself, so you should remove that right away because a poor person, like I repeated earlier, with a wheelchair cannot get on a bus.
Counselor Lopez.
Thank you. I also agree with Counselor Recupero. I have heard so many calls when a car is blocking a handicap ramp, right? And this area, wherever, Everett Avenue and Broadway, they block the ramp for handicap people. Mother with strollers, people going laundry, they pull a car, they cannot go there because that is blocked. So I don't know what is the, what's the intention to put that there, and it should be removed. When a car is blocking a ramp, people call the police, or the police come and give them a ticket. How come no one say nothing about this? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Vito.
I just want to say that the issue of accessibility is one that we really need to prioritize, that I think we really have lacked for years. And so I agree with what my brother counselors have just said. I also want to remind everybody that, you know, we are very dense, we have huge parking issues. All the more reason why I hope that everyone is in attendance tomorrow for the Traffic Parking Commission Subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Brown.
No, I'm outside.
Outside. Counselor Taylor.
So I just want to say that I have had some constituents reach out to me about accessibility for disabled people, both here at City Hall and around the city. So I do, I do think that this is a real thing that we should be cognizant of and understand that, you know, we need to, we need to be, be aware of, of all the times and keep access to handicap parking available, making sure that the ramps are clear and free of debris so that people can get by. So I, I just thought I would be remiss in staying silent on this, on this fact, seeing that I have had several calls regarding this. So, so, you know, let's, let's try to do better.
Seeing no other speakers, I'll ask the clerk to read the next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Recupero. Order that the city manager direct the Department of Public Works Commissioner to ensure all speed bumps in Chelsea are visibly marked and painted to prevent accidents.
Chair recognizes Counselor Recupero.
Under suspension, there's no objection, like to speak on it.
Seeing no objections, you have the floor, Counselor.
There's lots of, now we're installing, which is a good thing, speed bumps, but they're not marked, they're not visible. They're just on the street. A lot of them don't have the fluorescent paint to tell people that it's there. And it should be there because a lot of times people forget they're there, and they hop over it, and they go way up in the air. So it should be a good thing for them to mark them. Every other city marks them. I don't understand why we don't mark them, so we should mark them the same way as every other city. We're no worse than any other city around. So let's make it a priority to mark these things that we're putting on the ground for the safety of the people that drive over them.
Thank you, Counselor. Seeing no other speakers, I'll ask the clerk to read the next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel President Robinson. Order that in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the Chelsea City Council hereby authorizes the city manager to accept the $15,000 grant from Mystic Valley-
Counsel Hattlerburg.
Motion to adopt by roll call vote.
I'll ask the clerk to call a roll call on the adoption, a yes will be to adopt.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia is absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia is absent. Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero.
Yes.
Counselor Vito.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Hattlerburg.
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent, and Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Eight members in favor, none opposed, three absent. Order is adopted.
Next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel President Robinson. Order that in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 64, Budget Management Procedures, whereby costs incurred in FY '21 and '23 were not-
Just a second reading?
It doesn't have to be.
No, this is new business. We just did the other.
Yeah, but it doesn't have to be. We couldn't roll call this.
You want to do it now, or do you want to, you really?
Yeah.
All right, I'll move that we do a roll call then.
Counselor Hattlerburg moves to roll call on the adoption, a yes vote will be to adopt.
Can you just, just point of information, can you clarify for me why it doesn't require a second reading?
Why it doesn't?
Yeah.
Because this was in last year's budget, and all we're doing is authorizing this to be paid.
So the only thing that would require a second reading are any new requests for funding? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll ask the clerk, make the roll call, yes vote will be to adopt.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia, absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia, absent. Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero.
Yes.
Counselor Vito.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Hattlerburg.
Yes.
Counselor Vega, absent. Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Eight in favor, none opposed, three absent. Order is adopted. Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel President Robinson. Order that pursuant to section four dash three I of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, the Chelsea City Council approves the cost items set forth in the collective bargaining agreement negotiated with USWA Local 9427.
Both of these to a second reading.
Chair recognizes Counsel Hattlerburg. He makes a motion to move it to a second reading.
I would do the same with the following order, which is also on the same collective bargain.
The following order will be moved to a second reading. There are no objections. Counsel Recupero, this is part of the packet that came up earlier. Anybody want to speak on the matter? Yes.
Would that move to something coming up?
That's it. That was what we just moved.
So you're just gonna move it to a second reading?
Yeah, so the last two items were moved to a second reading.
Yeah.
That's all for new business. Move on to public announcements.
Any public announcements? Counsel Recupero.
Yeah, me. I'd like to thank all the people, because I didn't have a chance to, that voted during the election for me. I'd like to tell them thank you for, it would be my pleasure to serve the people of the city again, especially the people of my district. And the second public announcement that I'd like to make is be careful around Marginal Street and Willow and Highland because they're putting up all the walls for that new building that's there. So the thing will be congested. So just be careful driving down there and find maybe alternative routes because they work on a central avenue too. And those are like major arteries to get out and then out of the city. So if you don't watch yourself the way you go, you might get stuck in traffic for a very long time. Thank you.
Counsel Vito.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to acknowledge city councilor-elect Lisa Sandigate that's in the room tonight, and our city manager, Fidel Maltese, who will both be starting in January. And like Counsel Recupero said, thank you everybody who came out to vote. It was a very, very low voter turnout, and I hope that we really do our due diligence moving forward to make sure that more people are getting involved civically. Secondly, I want to remind everybody, I know I already said it, but I, we have a Traffic Parking and Commission Subcommittee tomorrow that's very, very important. We're constantly complaining about parking. Here's an opportunity to talk with the group that actually makes the decisions that impact that and try to figure out how we can solve some of our concerns. Lastly, there's a Subcommittee happening next Tuesday on the 27th, is that the 27th? Next Tuesday, the 27th, at 6:00 PM with Chelsea Pride with respect to the issue that happened with, the issues that they were having internally with falsifying medical records and some monies that were owed to parents. We will be sitting down with the leaders of Chelsea Pride, as well with the recreational department, to figure out what or if anything we can do with respect to oversight. So I just want to make sure, those are two very important subcommittees that are happening-